All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, thank you, apologize. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Angie for an update for our afternoon work session.
So Community Corrections Director Steve Berger is able to move his item up so we can start with that item. Immediately and Clerk Moss, what link should we use?
We can stay on this link. IT has stopped the audio of the board meeting and is restarting it to capture this one as specific work session. So just give us just a minute before we get started.
So we are staying on this link right now, so please don't leave. We're moving forward and into work session.
Yes, and we are ready to go.
All right. With that, I would like to welcome Mr. Steve Berger. Are you with us, Steve?
Good morning. Yes, I am. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your flexibility in moving, moving your time slot. We appreciate it. We all appreciate it.
No worries. It certainly is, is evidence of our ability to be flexible and create efficiencies in our schedules. If you would like, I can go ahead and start if you're ready.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Well, first off, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to review the legislatively approved budget following the last regular session. We've certainly finished the session in a much better position than where we started with the Governor's proposed budget, and I believe it was due to a comprehensive statewide effort educating our legislators and sharing the successful message of community corrections. I do want to emphasize and thank you for your active role in talking with our legislators and making community corrections funding a priority during the session. You and our government relations team made a significant difference, so I wanted to start by saying thank you. Next slide. Earlier this year, you asked me to come back following the legislative session to discuss community corrections funding. Today, I will unpack the 2021-23 legislatively approved budget and share a few considerations during the discussion for our upcoming county fiscal budget for 2122. First, however, I will briefly highlight our strategic goals and share how Washington County is leading Oregon's implementation of evidence-based strategies and principles of criminal justice reform. Next slide. Community Corrections provides three primary functions. Four, if you include, as I do, rewards and positive reinforcement. So we have supervision, services, sanctions, and rewards. In Washington County, these functions are uniquely delivered based upon a change agent relationship in which we create a professional alliance with justice-involved individuals under our supervision. We are more than a one-dimensional compliance monitoring agency. Our supervision functions are integrated into a service delivery practice model I will speak to in more detail in just a bit. Supervision and services include treatment, counseling, assessments, case planning, and community engagement. Sanctions are generally more recognized by most to include jail, electronic monitoring, community service, and increased reporting or supervision. Rewards include written and verbal praise, reduced supervision, or gift cards. It can be as simple as a thank you for showing up for an appointment. Now, some may say showing up for an appointment is not deserving of a reward because they were directed to report. I like to point out that those under our supervision still have a choice. Between their home and our office, there are many opportunities whether they are going to follow through with those directives or not. And now there may be consequences, but it's still a choice, so we should find ways to reward the desired behaviors. I like to use the phrase "using the carrot when we can." Next slide. I won't spend too much time on this slide or the next, other than to note we have five strategic goals which you reviewed last month and approved in our 2021-23 biennium plan. Our first goal is prioritizing equity, diversity, and inclusion, aligning current practices within the countywide EDI initiatives, and centering all practices within EDI. For this, our department developed an internal EDI consulting team to ensure application of EDI practice initiatives to all of our practices, policies, and procedures. We also actively participate in the Washington County EDI Leadership Council and subcommittees to ensure department practices align with the countywide initiatives. The second strategic goal is behavior change. Next slide. Third is accountability. Fourth, resource management, ensuring services and resources will be sustainable, cost-effective, evidence-based, and performance-based. And lastly, but certainly not least, our commitment to victims and community, respecting and addressing victims' rights and needs, contributing to community reparation, providing culturally appropriate services to enhance our accessibility for victims and community members, collaborating with criminal justice agencies, professionals, advocates, and community on meeting victim needs, providing victim services to support community efforts and providing services to our victims and their families, and make, make all reasonable efforts to collect victim restitution and court costs. Next page. Next slide, please. This slide, I do want to pause and discuss a bit before we dive into the detail of the budget discussions. As I mentioned earlier, in Washington County, supervision is a service beyond compliance monitoring, and we do this based upon a change agent relationship in which we create a professional alliance with justice-involved individuals under our supervision. I like to emphasize, and I did put it in bold here, we are not armed. We are one of only two jurisdictions in the state that are not armed. We have an outstanding safety record, and I believe our unique supervision strategy enhances our ability to create a professional alliance that promotes positive behavior change. Now, on the right-hand slide side of this, of this slide is a model that depicts how our staff use motivational interviewing or development, engaging, focusing, evoking, and planning, then use cognitive coaching to describe new behaviors, model using role play, and practice providing feedback and assigning homework on many occasions. Next slide. Our Community Corrections Center is the largest work release and transition center in the state. We are committed to evidence-based practices, which, put simply, are proven strategies and the implementation of the latest technology for residential reentry centers. I should also note, while we are the largest, we are one of only four within the state, the others being Clackamas, Marion, and Jackson. Next slide. Within our mission and values, we promote successful transition into the community, thereby increasing public safety. We know a significant component to this successful transition is cognitive behavioral change, which supports effective life changes. All employees within the center have been trained on the core correctional practices, which is evidence-based. These practices range from brief interactions during a conversation or an intervention to a more bold-directed, what I refer to as a takeaway or a homework assignments for the residents to complete. You can see from the topics listed that these are basic life skills, and the idea is to consistently work with residents to develop a foundation for necessary life skills which they may not possess or are impacted by thinking errors, which they likely contributed to their current status. The next slide begins our conversation related to the budget for community corrections. There are three statutory and administrative rule references governing the state community corrections budget, referred to as grant and aid from the state. ORS 423-483 establishes each biennium's appropriation and that it must be at the baseline, otherwise referred to as current service level, or CSL. Section two of that ORS provides an opportunity for counties to opt out of the relationship with the state if funding falls before, below, current service level, and then section three defines current service level. ORS 423-530 describes the method used to allocate grant-made funding and indicates only the legislature or E-Board can reduce funding. That reduction must be equally distributed amongst all counties statewide. And then lastly, the Oregon Administrative Rule simply reaffirms the above ORS and speaks to the detail about how the, how the agencies perform those functions. Next slide. There are two main components of the state budget, budget building and budget allocation, and so I'll walk through that process in a little more detail. Next slide. As with any process, there are multiple timelines. Between April and June of the even-numbered years, the State Department of Corrections develops an agency request for the Governor based upon daily rates specific to the Corrections April population forecast. This includes a breakdown of the cases, which I will define in a moment. The Governor then develops a proposed budget for the legislature in the late fall of the even-numbered years. The Governor's budget is further adjusted by the October Corrections Forecast and approved policy packages submitted to the Governor. Lastly, during the legislative session, the Corrections April Forecast is used to finalize the current service level budget in addition to any newly passed legislation. As we walk, as we walk through this, you can begin to see the impact COVID and the backlog of pending court cases may play related to the population forecast as community corrections funding follows a capitated rate based upon the total population under supervision. Next slide. This is where it starts to get a little more detailed. In developing the capitated rate, all justice-involved individuals on active supervision are counted in three snapshots during the odd-numbered years, including those transferred out of state, being supervised through an interstate compact agreement. The incentive, and it also includes incentive cases which were closed for good behavior. These cases are referred to as earned discharge, which we continue to receive funding for through the original sentencing date, as not to penalize a jurisdiction for good work and motivate and moving of individuals off supervision to reward good behavior. I would like to highlight, we are currently in the window now for three snapshots in preparation for the 2023-25 budget. The first and second snapshots were taken October 1st and November 1st, with the third scheduled for December 1st. I don't want to get sidetracked on my next comment, but I am concerned that the COVID pandemic, which has led to a significant backlog of pending criminal cases, could have future budgetary impacts well beyond the pandemic based upon the current unprecedented low caseload levels and the variable associated with the court's proceeding of the backlog. The quicker the resolution of the backlog could lead to an increased caseload disproportionate to the funding based upon the snapshots taken this year. This will be something that we need to watch and maintain a dialogue with the state. I know myself and our government relations staff have provided a notice to the state that this, you know, that this variable exists and that there is currently not a window in the existing ORS or the administrative rule process that would generally allow for modifications of these snapshots. So they are aware, but I believe it's going to be important for us to continue that dialogue, make sure that the state is tracking the potential disconnect between the funding and when the snapshots were taken at, at a specific low point in our, in our current caseload. Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So what you're saying is, is basically, we could not ask for consideration of using the 2019 numbers, which we would consider to be more normal, than the 21 numbers, which we are concerned about the case flow catching up sometime in '22, and then all of a sudden, our numbers will significantly increase. So is that what I'm hearing, that we're, we don't have those options?
Well, when I raised the question, the state just simply said, well, there's, there's not a mechanism in place for, within the existing rule to make that happen. However, as, as I believe, we have a dynamic form of government and we have a very interactive process of how we do our business, I'm optimistic that should there be a significant gap between the caseload, the workload statewide, and the funding, should jurisdictions accelerate those backlog cases, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to have a dialogue with the State Department of Corrections and provide a window to where there might be an alternative. We use this phrase "unprecedented pandemic", and in my perspective, that usually means, that means there's going to be unprecedented circumstances and workarounds, right? So, again, I'm optimistic that if we track this and stay ahead of it, it will provide us an opportunity to have a dialogue with the state to hopefully address the gap if, if there is, you know, if that, if that circumstance becomes a reality.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Next slide. Along with the PowerPoint slide deck, you should have received three attachments. This slide is relating to Attachment A, which is titled 2021-23 Budget Development Capitated Rates. The snapshots are averaged and categorized by calculated risk level. And so if you'll see in those categories, you'll see the type of case starts off as local control, new, high, medium, and low. Next slide. The daily rates which contribute to the capitated rate is established using elements of the DOC legislatively approved budget from the previous biennium. Individual calculated risk score rates were established as part of the 2006 actual cost study and have been applied inflation over time. The new case rate is applied for the first 60 days after admission to probation or release to post-prison supervision or parole, regardless of the calculated risk level. And then at the bottom, as you can see at the bottom of the slide, the 2021-23 daily rates were based upon the 2019-21 legislatively approved budget and the 2012 time study. Next slide. On this slide, I want to note how the local control rate represents the smallest percentage of the total, yet the highest daily rate weighing heavy in the formula. And despite the highest cost, because it's dealing with averages, it does not come near our daily rate that we experience for our jail bed rates. And I will remind the board, local control means those are individuals that have been sentenced to a period of incarceration of less than a year, but are housed locally in our jail. So as you can see, the negotiated daily rate for, for that population is $137. In contrast, our daily jail bed rate, you know, is, is a little bit north of $200. So every day that we're holding somebody in our jail for that local control population, we're going in the hole. Next slide. In this slide, the monthly costs add, add to arrive at the forecasted current service level. In this slide, between the slide and the next, I want to shed the difference between the ARB, the Agency Requested Budget in April of the even year, the Governor's balanced budget in April, it's usually submitted between a period of timeframe between April and October of the even year, and the legislatively approved budget, which is in April of the odd year. You will note the $278 million Agency Request Budget in April 2020. Next slide. Now, you will note down there with the red arrow, the LAB tied to the April 2021 forecast, only $234 billion. This is due to the decline in the population under supervision. The Agency Request Budget again is in April of the even year, and then the LAB is in April of the odd year. Next slide. So the final legislatively approved budget was impacted by three factors. The change in the forecast, policy option packages, and new legislation. Please reference Attachment B as I walk through this next section. This slide has, has a cutout of the bottom corner of Attachment B. Next slide. Package 244 was a significant bonus for our funding challenge associated with inflationary costs. Historically, the state-reviewed grant and aid for community corrections similar, is viewed similar to a contracted services and not eligible for the state practice of what they call exception inflation rate adjustments. This is a common practice for state agencies to account for inflation adjustments to state personnel services, accounting for inflationary costs beyond traditional indexing. Items like healthcare benefits, union negotiations, and challenging, challenging classifications that they have to make adjustments in their benefits and wages for recruiting, for recruiting purposes. Package 244 incorporates the state exception inflation rate for community corrections. Further, this budget note will be rolling forward. So now that it's been incorporated into the state budget, it is a, it is a policy practice that will be rolling forward into future biennia. This package was based upon a 2019 county survey establishing 65.8% of county grant and aid expenses were tied to personnel expenses. In this case, $32.7 million was added as part of a 13.67% exception inflation rate calculation applied to the community corrections budget. Next slide. Rolling forward, the state is still statutorily required to conduct the actual cost study every six years. However, this new budget policy practice will hopefully minimize the associated sticker shock every six years by accounting for inflationary factors associated with personnel expenses every biennium budget. Next slide. Package 811 was a result of Senate Bill 620, which repealed the authority for community corrections to collect a monthly supervision fee to offset the cost of services. For us in Washington County, this was set by the board not to exceed $50, and we were charging $35 per month. Although an infringement on local control and the county's authority to establish fees for services, the move is consistent with the county strategies to reduce financial burdens of those in need. In this package, the $10 million enhancement to the statewide grant and aid budget represents a local loss of revenue estimated to be about $75,000 for the current fiscal year 2122. However, for fiscal year 2223, it could be closer to $250,000, and that is based upon our past collection rates with the population under supervision. Next slide. Package 813 was, was another successful legislative priority through Senate Bill 497, in which your time with legislators and the help of our government relations staff paid off. Package 813 is the implementation of Senate Bill 497, providing state grant-made funding from State Department of Corrections or our local community corrections to provide supervision, sanctions, and services for individuals convicted of certain domestic violence misdemeanors starting in January 2022. This investment will mean assault or constituting domestic violence, menacing, constituting domestic violence, and sexual abuse in the third degree will be fully funded for supervision starting in January 2022. Next slide. That's how we build the budget pie. Next slide. So following the building of the pie, the general question remains, what is the estimated capitated rate based upon the policy options and legislation passed? The following, the following on top of the left slide of this, of this slide is my best accounting, which I reviewed with the State Department of Corrections. This is important as the capitated rate is what we will use locally to establish our department budget general fund request for the unfunded misdemeanor services we choose to provide here in Washington County. In, in the distant past, we had a budgetary practice where we simply put all of our expenses together and then, and then came to the general fund and said, we need, we need some help. We got a gap. What we've moved to over recent fiscal years is a more, I, I guess, a more precise accounting to ensure that we're not shortchanging ourselves at the local level. So we've taken that daily rate or that capitated rate, and then we have applied it to our unfunded misdemeanor population. And if you look on the right-hand slide of the side of this slide, you'll see right now that caseload is about 949 cases or 31% of our total caseload under supervision. We then take that capitated rate and then we apply it to that population, and that's what we, that's our formula that we use to drive our agency request to the general fund. So after backing out Package 810, which is $10 million for the supervision fee enhancement from the $284 billion grant equation, recognizing that supervision fees have never been a part of grant and aid or the daily rate when accounting for the total caseload options, the funded rate going forward looks like 13678. That number could morph around possibly for the worse, or it could go higher depending upon the ratio of who's under supervision at, at the time when we do our snapshots. Again, reminding that we take snapshots, looking at the population, and there are different rates for those that are under supervision, whether they're high, medium, low, a new case, or a local control case. The 2018 actual cost study rate was 142249, but it's important to note that the population under supervision was much higher with a different ratio of risk. For context, 13.678 is 95.99% of the 2018 actual cost study calculated rate, which represents a 13.35% increase from the 2019. which represents a 13.35% increase from the 2019 capitated rate of 12.067. It's a little awkward. The state used the state rounds out to three to three points. And so it's a little it's a little more difficult to roll off the tongue, but you can see it there on the slide. You can see the differences. Next slide. So here I wanted to add some considerations for the 2023 25 biennium. As I mentioned, the local control prison population that's held locally is the smallest population classification, but it has the highest cost. That population is dramatically changing over time. And if you look back to the beginning of the local control legislation back in 97, the state local control population was just a little bit over 1,000. There was a high water mark in May of 2001 of just over 1,500 of those cases. In June of 2021 statewide, there were only 278. This represents 73.9% decrease since 1997 and an 81.7% change since the high water mark in May of 2001. Next slide. This shows this shows the decline in that local control population specific for Washington County. And if you look at our local local trending data since 2017 to 2021, it depicts a 78.22% decline. The decline in this population will have a have a significant effect relating to future budgets. Next slide. Future funding associated with package 811 Senate Bill 620. The 10 million supervision fee enhancement should also be tracked separately from the grant aid equation. Again, recognizing that supervision fees have never been a part of grant aid daily rate over time. The challenge for us is at the beginning of any program, it's really easy to see the change. For us, this package was an ad. It was 10 million. So it was really easy to make that adjustment. In the future biennium, I'm the the policy discussion as it was as it was put into effect talks about that money being rolled into grant aid. So I think we're going to have to really work with the Department of Corrections to be able to identify the increase in our general fund or excuse me, the increase in the general grant aid that is specifically attributed to that to that fee enhancement. There has been an agreement that it will include inflationary costs, but those costs are also important to note for future interdepartmental transfers to the sheriff for local control. So for example, for this fiscal year, it was a very simple. It was a very simple conversation between the sheriff and I acknowledging that that $10 million was has never historically been used for grant aid calculations. And so we we extracted that 10 million out when we were identifying the 26% that would be transferred from community corrections to the sheriff's office or jail operations to house the local control population. Next slide. This slide simply depicts the forecasted population in the blue line at the top and the associated legislatively approved budget in the bar graph below. As you can see, this was the first time in a in a few years where the budget actually grew. I'm not sure if you guys can hear that, but you may have to bear with me. We've got some people washing the washing the windows in my office. So I can hear it. I don't know if you guys can hear it, but our facility staff are taking care of us and making sure we have clear windows. So when we see a little bit of sun, we get to enjoy it.
You're fine, Steve. Thank you.
Next slide. Okay. So up to now, we've been talking about how the pie was built. Now, how big of a slice does Washington County get? Next slide. For the allocation, there are two steps. Determining the county caseload and individual county by county allocation percentages and applying those percentages to the legislatively approved budget to determine each county slice of the pie. Next slide. Determining county by county allocation snapshots are taken in October, November, and December of the even numbered years of the community corrections caseload. All justice involved individuals under active supervision are included in that. And that includes the incentive cases, justice involved individuals that are close to either bench probation or early termination, or as I mentioned before, earned discharge. The 2023 25 allocation snapshots will be taken from October, November, and December 2022 caseloads. And at that point, that will be including the designated person misdemeanors that we talked about in Senate Bill 497. So that's going to be a bonus for us in that we will be able to extract those cases from our request to the general fund, recognizing that they are funded at the state level. Next slide. This slide notes the incentive cases that are included. Cases which were closed early for good behavior. These are cases referred to as early term bench or earned discharges, I noted. Will continue to receive funding for those cases through the original sentence date as not to jeopardize jurisdictions for good work and moving individuals off supervision to reward good behavior. Next slide. This slide is the other attachment that's associated with the PowerPoint. So if you take a look at attachment C. This is the state allocation percentage specific to Washington County. So we went based upon those snapshots, we are currently 8.94%. That's the lowest percentage that we've had for some time now over the so to provide some context for 20 for 2019 21, our percentage was 9.12%. And in 2017 19, our percentage was 9.4. And our high water mark was in 2015 to 2017, which was 9.68%. So as you can, as you can see, the population under supervision is declining, which I guess is a good indication of public safety in Washington County while our population as our community is growing, the population under supervision and those associated with criminal activities is declining. So I guess you could say that's one good indicator. Next slide. This slide simply provides the definitions associated with the columns on attachment C. And next slide, I'll conclude by sharing a consideration for general fund fiscal year 2022. Community correction center staffing in maximum capacity due to the current COVID situation is restricted and capped at 96 to make sure that we have ample spacing for social distancing and you know, the if you're again, I know you folks are very familiar with our community correction center, but it is a residential facility and it's residential in nature. So making sure that we have ample distancing in a congregant setting is very important. The fiscal year maximum occupancy for funded operations, if COVID was not in play, was established at a funding ratio of 167. As I noted, we do have a maximum capacity to take up to 215, but that would require an increased commitment from the general fund and transition and a transition from a minimum staffing strategy to a full recommended staffing strategy. The current COVID restricted occupancy has minimized the impacts of what we've been utilizing over the past several years as minimum staffing practices. However, historic patterns of minimum staffing levels have resulted in mandatory overtime and practices negatively affecting employee retention and morale. As I'm sure you can understand, when you operate a minimum security custody facility, you have to establish a minimum. And if you don't have, if somebody calls in sick, you have to go to the last shift and make it a mandatory overtime and choose somebody to stay over. Or there are oftentimes, especially as you enter into the holidays and vacations where you have to make decisions to say who's not going to be allowed time off. My recommendation going forward is that if we are going to increase the occupancy beyond where we're currently funded, my recommendation is that I'm going to work with the administrator's office to look at strategies for future funding to make sure that we are looking at budgeting for recommended staffing levels instead of minimum staffing levels before we make those decisions, recognizing the impact that we that we've been experiencing with our staff, especially during this current COVID pandemic. Next slide. That concludes the unpacking of the budget, how it was built, how it was allocated, and where, from my perspective, we ended up in a much better position than where we started. And again, I like to I like to believe that the work we do matters and the work that you folks did by prioritizing community corrections budget with our government relations staff played a big part in our effort to educate legislators down in Salem. And if I was to call out one specific person in addition to you folks on on the board, I would highlight that Jiji, you know, really, really, he really carried the ball for us down there and put in a lot of extra work and I can't I can't speak his praises highly enough right now. But with that, I would open it up to any discussion if you have any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Before we do that, Mr. Berger, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very comprehensive. And I think all of us would agree that Jiji did a great job for us in Salem. So thank you for that. Are there comments? Commissioner Willie.
Just a question for Steve back on slide 35, when you were talking about considerations for general fund fiscal year. The last item there probably is the most important part of it, the anticipated budget impact of $1 million. So I just want to make sure that I understand that's that's what you're talking about through all of the calculations that you walked us through there. The budget impact is a million dollars. Am I correct in understanding that?
Well, that would be that's a that will be a policy decision that we are going to that we would need to make. If if we were going to make the decision to increase our maximum capacity or occupancy at the community correction center beyond where we are currently operating at now. If we were going to raise it from the 167 back up to the 215 post COVID, that policy decision is going to come with a price tag that, you know, is is in the ballpark of a million. It's it's actually a little lower than that, but I just I rounded up. But that would be a policy decision that we would have to make locally and I might get my my belief is we would, that would be a conversation that we would work through with the administrator's office and the sheriff's office based upon what I assume would be the driver of what's our custody population? And what's the population that's currently eligible to be housed at the community correction center? So I wouldn't say that we're I wouldn't say that there's a gap or a deficit of a million. It's just there will be a policy decision at some point that we're going to need to make a decision if we are going to increase our occupancy that there will be a price tag with it. And then I simply just wanted to add, my recommendation would be if we make that if we make that policy decision, my recommendation is that we base it upon recommended staffing levels as opposed to the minimum staffing levels necessary to raise our occupancy.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that for that clarification.
Are there other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd comment, Steve. Nice deep dive. I'm not sure that I tracked every number. And this is a pretty pretty detailed analysis of what's transpiring, but I've always in my, I guess, neophyte understanding of how you're dealing with things. There's a lot of projections, a lot of guessing as to what's going to happen. Is there a kernel in here for us, those of us who aren't pushing the pencil quite as hard as you and figuring out all the details? Is there something that ought to be done other than advocate at state level, I understand? But it's something that correct the formulas. I mean, this seems like a mathematician's jumbled nightmare there. Just to figure out how to do this and then to try to figure out how we even it up amongst everyone. It seems to me that there's some policy questions in my, again, my my basic understanding that that if there was a per capita, not like you're deriving it out, but some sort of a per capita that was not based upon historical formulas, but new formulas of what real costs are, that that would drive the state and their and their funding. I mean, we're using a lot of, and again, correct me where I'm wrong, but a lot of outdated stuff and trying to somehow fit us all into these neat little boxes and silo. Same, but this is all we have. This is what we've done. And that's how we do it. I'm sure you wouldn't come up with the same funding analysis if you were doing it, if you had the golden pencil, but I'm rambling a bit because it's very complex stuff. Trying to it looks like Washington County is not getting full funding from a state program. That's what it looks like to me. And so tell me what I've missed and what you would do differently if you were king of the day.
Well, I think we'd probably be in a lot more trouble if I was king for the day, but Commissioner Rogers, I think you do. I think you're tracking. You're tracking the issue very well. And the challenge for us is that when you have a formula for funding that is based upon averages, there's always going to be winners and losers. And for us, and I would and I would put Washington County in partnership with our other metro area counties, Baltimore and Clackamas. You know, it's 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 pretty easy to understand the generalization of what we have here is that the costs associated with correctional services and personnel services and jail costs are higher in the metro area than they are in some of the more rural districts of our state. And so for a population that has a very heavily weighted cost such as that local control population, Washington County is always since the inception of this piece of legislation has always been on the on the low end of that funding formula. So if I had to highlight something, there is a work group that's being pulled together statewide to take a look at future funding for local control and how it's and how it's incorporated within the grant aid budget. I know that we are going to be actively engaged in that work group and representing the interests of Washington County. So I know Jiji and myself and and I would assume the chair would be involved with that as well. We'll be taking a look at how we can better represent the metro area costs and Washington County costs specifically related to those local control population. The other factor that I think we need to keep our eye on is what I highlighted during the presentation is that potential gap where the state is taking those snapshots now as it for what's going to relate to our funding and allocation in the future. And the variable that's going to be very telling is the variable rate which our courts address those backlog of criminal cases. And so the the faster or the more accelerated rate in which they or resolve those backlog cases, community corrections is downstream. So that will impact our caseload. So if if they accelerate a rate potentially disproportionate to our potentially disproportionate to our funding snapshots, there's going to be, you know, there's going to be a rub there. There's going to be some tension. We'll have an increased workload, but our allocation and funding is based upon those early snapshots. So it, to me, it's just one of those things that we're going to have to continue to track to where we have that conversation with the state to address some of these, what we identify as unprecedented circumstances. So we're going to have to have some unprecedented responses to how we deal with those as well.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Chair Harrington, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrice. First, I'll start. Steve, this is fantastic information. And I really want to compliment you and your team as well as Lynn Schroder's Juvenile Justice Team with three of us, new members on the board in 2019. And especially for me, you really helped me as the chair understand the funding landscape and how to prioritize my time and energy the last few years in order to serve the agency well and serve our community well. You know, I came in determined to ensure that I was better able to make decisions based upon community need and the fact that Washington County had previously made a choice to set up the Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Teams with the level of excellence and utilization of best practices is just incredible, and I feel really blessed. I just have a few things. I want to, so you've really done a good job of helping us understand how the various levels are defined through state averages and so forth, and helped us appreciate that over the course of time that Washington County's public safety rate, incidence rate continues to be lower than our population growth might indicate. For our operations, whether under COVID or not, can you help me understand as a gross generalization, what percentage level of operation the team, your team and the residential center tends to operate at? Like, over the course of time, we flex between, I'm making numbers up, 80% and, you know, 100% at capacity or what?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. That's a very challenging question. I don't know that we've ever, I don't know that we've ever allocated a specific, you know, percentage for operations. We've never, we've never really viewed it that way. Typically, the way we go about allocating our resources is we, we go about, we do our biennial plan and then we allocate, you know, we do, we do a budget. And then we always try to operate, you know, fiscally responsible to that budget. And oftentimes, you know, the CFO will then ask us to operate, say, at the 90% level to ensure that there's sufficient carryover.
Right, right, right.
Our plan is typically put forward at a, at a desired service level commensurate with the resources that we have.
Yeah.
And then we haven't, we haven't really approached it as a percentage of current service level. We've never, we've never addressed it that way.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm reminded well through your response. I really appreciate that. Because part of what is in, going on in my head is the fact that with this pandemic, we have this backlog of court cases. And, you know, if there was, you know, somebody had a magic wand and all of a sudden the courts were able to try to catch up or work through some portion, if not all of that backlog and get back to more of a stasis mode or something. You know, I'm imagining, oh, there might be, the court might direct that there is a new influx, yet you have both what you're financed to operate at and then what your physical and personnel capacity is to handle. And so I'm trying to figure out some of that or get a feel for it, rather. But really fundamentally, what my second area of interest is, is, and it's not determined by you, but Ms. Angie, if you could work with the team to help us, or at least me, given that I have this interest, better understand what the backlog is right now. You know, I acknowledge that we have heard before and we continue to hear that there is a backlog, but I don't know what the court's estimate might be for at their current rate, how long it will take them to work through that backlog is one scenario. Another scenario is if you and your team have had, Ms. Angie, had the opportunity to look for holes in the event center schedule to see if some portion, some significant portion of that backlog could be addressed by the courts once again. And I know there are lots of moving parts, right? Can't just have the judges, but you have to have all those witnesses, defendants, defense attorneys, prosecuting attorneys, all of that. But what kind of options might we need to try to scope out with tranche two funding, given holes in the event center utilization? So certainly not anything I expect you to be answering today. But I'm just trying to frame up, okay, how do we get back? Or how do we, how do we advance for more of living with COVID? So cold, the flu and so forth versus being negatively impacted by it?
So Chair Harrington, I can, at least at a high level, answer that question that the work is on progress. Interim Assistant County Administrator Erin Calvert is working with Dorian Russell, our senior program coordinator, and all of our public safety and justice departments to answer that question. It is, the cases is not just an impact on community corrections. It really is reflective of the full system of service, and it gets complicated pretty quick. So really, what we're trying to understand is what are the scenarios? Because any option, it does impact the whole system, and it really does start with the courts.
Yep. And it's, it's been an experience over the last year hearing from our legislative caucuses about certain concerns. So as I imagine, not only the 2021 short session, but the, no, excuse me, the 2022 short session, but then the 2023 long session, you know, trying to anticipate what sort of questions and estimates from the outside. It may be easier for them to say, well, what do you mean you don't know? And are saying, well, it's complicated. I don't know how that will go over, so I don't know. We'll figure something out. Another, I just have two other things. With the state legislative redistricting, it seems to me, looking at the Washington County, both representative and Senate districts, that my experience is that there are more positions in play now than there were just two or four years ago. And so that means, leading up to the 2023 session, we could possibly have a whole nother set of players that we need to go through the training on the excellent Washington County Public Safety System as well as community corrections. So hopefully, your time with us, Mr. Berger, is time well spent in leading towards that. And then lastly, you mentioned the work group at the state level. And so just one thing I would appreciate subsequent to this meeting is what sort of time horizon might that work group land in? Will it be, for example, just a first half of 2022, second half, or 2023, first half or second half? Because as we on the board talk about and use our board initiatives tool, we try to identify what aspects of the state legislature and the budget are we particularly sensitive to, where the board may need to spend some time or political capital working? And I want to make sure I follow through and do well for, for the agency. So, thank you. That's it for me. You know, just once again, really excellent presentation. Thank you so much for unpacking all of this for us.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I'll make sure I coordinate with, the work group on funding is being coordinated by the Governor's Office. So as soon as that comes together and they have some projected meetings, I'll definitely pass that schedule along.
Are there any other comments or questions? Well, Mr. Berger, thank you very much for the very detailed presentation. It was, if Commissioner Rogers might have been lost for a moment, I can tell you that I was much further behind Commissioner Rogers. So, but thank you. And it was great information. We appreciate it. So with that, I'd like to move to Tanya because my understanding is that we do have an opportunity to move forward with the presentation on the Affordable Housing Bond and Supporting Housing Services, the quarterly update. So we have the opportunity to move forward with that, but my guess is that you might want to take a break before we do that. So instead of going for, maybe I'm proposing that we have a 10-minute break and then have the housing presentation and we will be able to adjourn early. Are you comfortable with that, Chair Harrington?
I think that's a great idea. I am one hour ahead of you folks. So if we could possibly make it a 15-minute break so I can grab a bite to eat just during the break, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Great. I'm sure we can accommodate that. We would send you DoorDash, but I don't know the Tucson address there. So, Tanya, are we okay to do that 15 minutes reconvene? We can make it at 10 to 12 and we'll finish our day. Is that, is that comfortable with Josh and with Shannon, Jess, others as well?
They are on standby. They're ready to present. Comey is the only one that won't be able to attend, but he said the team is in good hands, so for us to proceed. So we will continue on this link at 10 to noon. Did you say 10 to noon or a quarter to noon?
Is that comfortable for all the other commissioners? Okay, good, great. See you back here at 10 to 12, or 10 to 1.
Wait, are we doing 10 to 15-minute break? Or are we taking the whole lunch and coming back 12:50?
Commissioner Fai, it was, we're convening back at 11:50.
11:50, okay. Good, good, good. I thought I heard 12:50, Kevin. Thank you.
Commissioner Fai, are you with us? There she is. Great. So I would like to turn it, we're starting the section, excuse me, I need to look at my, on Affordable Housing Bond and Support of Housing Services, Joint Quarterly Update. Our presenters are Josh Kreitz, Shannon Wilson, and Jess Larson. So with that, I'm going to open the floor. The appropriate person, please step forward.
Thank you so much. Well, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Josh Kreitz and the Assistant Director of the Housing Department. We're really, really excited to be here with you this afternoon to provide this joint, our first joint quarterly update around our Affordable Housing Bond program and the Support of Housing Services program. So over the last two years, our Housing Department budget has really, really increased from $40 million up to $130 million. And if you want to look at some of the key reasons for that, the two programs that we're going to discuss today represent a lot of that growth. So we're excited to share the first Affordable Housing Bond project in the county's implementation area, which is the Viewfinder. It's our Phase One project, and that's scheduled to be completed next month. So we're really excited about that. And I think one thing that we want to highlight is Viewfinder is also the first opportunity that we have here to align our Support of Housing Services funds with our Affordable Housing Bond funds, as you're going to hear quite a bit about today. So I'm not going to take a lot of time because we have a lot of really good information, but I do want to say that we have a really innovative and collaborative team working in this department. We're looking for ways to collaborate, both internally with other departments, Health and Human Services, our Office of Equity, our comms teams, but also externally with our important community partners. And I think because of the unique structure of being the Public Housing Authority, the implementing SHS partner, the implementing MetroBond implementer, we're really able to think through unique opportunities to leverage these resources together to serve the most vulnerable folks here in Washington County. So we're really excited about that. And we're really excited to bring these resources to bear as quickly as possible while building that base that's really needed. So we're just incredibly proud of the work that's happening right now. Next slide, please. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Shannon. And I think we can go ahead and advance it to the next slide, and Shannon can get right into the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Shannon Wilson, Housing Development Manager. And yes, if we could go to the next slide, please. So first, for my part of the presentation, I just wanted to briefly provide context for the Affordable Housing Bond program. So the tri-county measure was approved by voters in November of 2018. From there, it took about a year for each implementing jurisdiction to draft their local implementation strategy and negotiate intergovernmental agreements with Metro. The county's agreement, IGA, with Metro was approved by your board and Metro Council in late 2019. And the Affordable Housing Bond brings just under $188.3 million total in capital funds to the three implementing jurisdictions in the county. And so that's the cities of Beaverton, Hillsborough, and then Washington County's implementation area. And the overall unit production goal then associated with those funds is an overall goal of producing 1,316 units of regulated affordable housing in the county. Next slide, please. So this slide gives you the overall pipeline of projects within the county. And so it's broken out by implementation area. And so I'm going to be focusing on Washington County's implementation area, but I did want you to have this overall portfolio for the county as a whole. Next slide, please. So this chart looks specifically at Washington County's implementation area. And there in the blue column, you can see the associated MetroBond and county-specific goals for the county's implementation area. So as you kind of walk through that, so goals around the total number of units, the number of units for extremely low-income households, that 30% median family income, a goal around the number of family-sized units, and then a goal established by your board in the local implementation strategy around the number of permanent supportive housing units. And there at the bottom of that column, you can see the total amount of MetroBond funds allocated specific to the county's implementation area of just under $116.5 million. And then as you move across the chart, you can see the 10 projects that your board has approved. And then over to the subtotal column, which gets at how those 10 projects come together to help achieve those unit production goals. And then the final column, which has the remaining number of units to be completed after that pipeline of projects. And so as you look at that last column, you can see that overall, we've nearly met the unit production goal with two units remaining, but we do have some 30% median family income units to build 24 or produce. And then 11 of those Uh and then 11 of those should be family-sized units. And so with those remaining funds at 17.2 million, uh the county is really well positioned to exceed the, these unit production goals uh that have been established by Metro and your board. Uh next slide, please. So looking specifically at this uh quarter that we're reporting on, the July through September period, uh one of the key activities during that period, uh as Josh uh mentioned as well, is the ongoing construction of Viewfinder. Viewfinder is the county's Phase One project located in the Tiger Triangle at the intersection of 72nd and Baylor. Uh it's an 81-unit project and is a partnership between Community Development Partners and the Housing Authority. Uh and one of the key features or maybe unique features about this project uh is all of the art in the building. And so the uh piece on your slide is just one of the many art pieces that will be throughout the building. Uh Community Development Partners had commissioned three local artists to produce a variety of pieces, some collage like this, some more photography. Um and so this piece on your screen is a mural collage that will be featured at the pedestrian entrance to the building. Uh and one other key activity that occurred during this quarter that's related to the Viewfinder is around community engagement. Uh it was related to the lease-up process for the Viewfinder. Uh so this was really our first opportunity to support an equitable lease-up process with an Affordable Housing Bond project. Uh so we engaged with culturally specific organizations to really begin to create a model for outreach and education uh for lease-up processes and then also marketing of the, of the projects. So we've been working closely with uh with community development partners as well as their property management company uh and really working to um to refine something that we can use on future projects as well. Uh next slide, please. Another key activity during uh the, the July through September quarter uh was a construction start for the Valfree and Avenida 26. This is a 36-unit project in Forest Grove, uh closed on its construction loan on July 23rd and began construction shortly thereafter. We did have a uh more of a groundbreaking photo op um at the site a few weeks later in August. So there you can see some um VIPs. I'm sure you recognize there on the slide. Uh and then some construction photos as well that were taken in, in late September. So as you can see, the, uh the project is, is well underway. Uh next slide, please. Uh so this slide kind of, uh this map kind of pulls back out to that aerial view and uh really to reiterate the geographic dispersal of the projects uh throughout the county. So this includes the projects within Washington County's implementation area. Those are the blue are the projects identified by a blue uh marker there on the map. And then those in maroon are two of the city of Beaverton's projects. And then the green is the uh city of Hillsborough's first Affordable Housing Bond project. Uh so just to kind of uh remind us all of the dispersal of the projects throughout the county. Uh next slide, please. And so I wanted to take a minute to and look, as we look at this quarter of July through September, but then also look forward to the uh fiscal year to see the number of units that will begin construction this fiscal year. Um so if you start at that kind of the top left square, the July through September, with 36 units, that's the Valfree that began construction in that quarter. Uh in this current quarter, we anticipate 198 units begin, beginning construction. Uh and then in the first quarter of 2022, another 270 units uh beginning construction. And then April through June, 111 units. So total in this fiscal year, we anticipate 615 units uh beginning construction. Uh next slide, please. And so the first of the, or one of those projects uh that will begin construction this quarter is the Aloha Inn. And so it's actually a conversion, an acquisition rehab project, but it'll begin that conversion work in December. And so this is a 54-unit project in unincorporated Washington County uh at the intersection of 198 and TB Highway. Uh next slide, please. And then the other project to begin construction this quarter is Terrace Glen. It is 144 units in Tiger, just uh very close to the Washington Square Mall. Uh and this is the largest project currently in the um county's implementation area portfolio. Uh next slide, please. And finally, I wanted to end my portion of the presentation by um highlighting four trends that we've seen uh thus far in implementation of the Affordable Housing Bond. Uh so the first one is that uh implementing the housing bond has helped us really leverage a, a previously underutilized source uh at the state, which is the 4% low-income housing tax credit. Uh and so that has been uh a big boost for the, for these projects. Uh the second trend is that the Affordable Housing Bond has attracted national and multi-state affordable housing developers. Uh and prior to the Affordable Housing Bond, I mean, we already had a great community of affordable housing developers and very strong. Um and so the addition of these uh new coming larger developers has really uh has just increased our capacity and helped us better achieve those or more quickly achieve those unit production goals. Um and then the third trend, which is kind of a counterpoint to the second one, is that the implementation of the housing bond has, has also bolstered community-based nonprofit developers in the county. Um so there are two developers that are smaller and really based to have the bulk of their portfolios in the county. And that's B&amp;Star and Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Uh and for both of those, the projects that they have received uh Affordable Housing Bond awards for, those are the largest projects in their portfolio to date. So um so bolstering these community-based nonprofits is really important for the um, for the communities that they serve. Because these are the organizations that really uh engage with community members as volunteers, as donors, and really connect with their, with their residents as well. Uh and then the fourth trend is that in implementation of Affordable Housing Bond, we've really had an opportunity to to really think through and, and operationalize advancing racial equity. And so it's been in contracting during the development process and then also in community engagement uh as we engage with culturally specific uh organizations and, and groups uh to look at project design, um layout of, of the buildings and projects. And then as we look at the lease-up process to see if they uh are equitable and that everyone has um, you know, is the same access to these units. Uh and then one other component of advancing equity in general is, is looking at how we provide units for those extremely low-income households and how we provide uh permanent supportive housing. Uh and so that's been um uh one of the significant trends as we've been implementing the bond and, and as now we're aligning with the Supportive Housing Services measure. Um so I want to thank you for your time and I will now hand it over to Jess Larson to talk about supportive housing. Thank you.
Oh, the chair has her hand up.
I thought it might just be worth noted, noting. Uh and by the way, I really appreciate all the information that you have in this work session. I continue to be amazed by our team and the terrific results. In the work session topic sheet, uh it talks about while Metro does not require a former quarterly report, staff has prepared a weekly update. Uh I think um I know I have asked for further information from our team about our, or some information from our team on a quarterly basis. I did not intend for it to be any sort of additional work or lift, but rather my only way of really following on the journey along the way has been to look at the Metro website with the Affordable Housing Quarterly Reports there, where from quarter to quarter, they do talk about Washington County projects. Uh but in addition, so what really the ask is I have is uh if there's uh, I think it would be helpful for us to just be reminded when that quarterly report is available. Uh even if it doesn't have any specific callouts for Metro Pro- um Washington County projects. I know that uh looking at their May 5th, uh excuse me, May 3rd, 2021 document, which was the January through March quarterly report, it talked about the Aloha Inn in a little bit more detail than I was familiar with. And also just reading about other projects throughout the region and also the kind of information that Metro staff has made sure that Oversight Committee gets has helped me understand uh the more of the on-the-ground work, on-the-ground work that has gone into the community engagement for these various affordable housing solutions throughout our region, including the racial equity component. So uh and the reason that I'm, I'm pausing us here to mention this is because we do have some interactions in our community that get a little bit contentious, you know, not in my backyard or lack of familiarity. And so having access to that information has helped me navigate some of those conversations. And so that's why I just wanted to um ask for a little bit of help from our staff to just on that once a month, uh excuse me, once a quarter basis, just remind me to go look over there. Uh you know, it's, it's a little bit cumbersome to find sometimes. But uh or if you can, could include a link just to the Metro Affordable Housing Oversight Committee main page, uh that would just be helpful. I really appreciate your listening to me and helping me do a better job as a board member. Thank you. And keep up the awesome work. Yay!
We can do that. We'll make sure you get that.
Yes.
All right. Uh thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Chair. Uh good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jess Larson. I'm the Supportive Housing Services Program with part, uh Program Manager with Part Two of your quarterly update on these two really game-changing regional investments that we're um getting to implement here in Washington County. So I am going to start with um a brief story. This is Dora. She um has been staying at our Bridge Shelter Program in Washington County um ever since her most recent episode of homelessness. And Dora has experienced homelessness intermittently for the last five years to, due to a variety of challenges, uh family challenges, um housing costs, uh healthcare challenges. And most recently, when her mother passed away, she lost an important part of her um s- safety uh net um and uh found uh and, and lost her housing and, and ended up homeless. And thankfully, uh uh through the support of our system of care that we are building out, was able to land at the Bridge Shelter where she got connected to a case manager. And that case manager has begun working with her on a housing plan, including um a permanent rent assistance subsidy, which will make her limited disability income um reach the cost of monthly rent, if you will, and uh is set to move into her home this month. And so I wanted to start this story off, Doris, uh start us off with Dora's story because those components, those three pieces of, of shelter, case manager, and rent assistance equaling home is the story of what Supportive Housing Services program is designed to do for people who struggle with disabling conditions and experience repeated homelessness in our community. And so Dora's story is one of what we hope to be 499 more households placed into permanent supportive housing through this first year of programmatic implementation. And I thought it was also a helpful depiction of the, how we are intentionally building out our system of care to bring these components um to bear in our community adequately scaled to meet the need and strategically working together to help connect people from one point in the system to the next, to the next, until they find that housing stability. Because both that rent assistance and that case manager will continue to support Dora in her um new home as the Supportive Housing Services program is designed to do. Okay, so with that um introduction, let me jump into the presentation. Next slide, please. Um so hopefully you've had a chance to see our quarterly report. It's uh been prepared representing the last three months of work well underway in implementation of the SHS program, our first quarterly report. Um these are the six chapters, if you will, of that report, and I will go through just a high-level overview of each of those elements in the quarterly report. You'll um need to kind of take the time to get into the report to get the full detail. We don't have enough time with you today. Um and also before I launch into sort of that high-level overview of um our programmatic implementation so far, I wanted to pause and thank and acknowledge the Supportive Housing Services team. Um really, I am here just representing the enormous amount of work that they have been leading in building out the system of care with this new Supportive Housing Services program. So uh just a quick shout out to my colleagues on the team, Heather Scriber, Alex Devon, Pranice Strub, Janine Smith, Ty Schwefferman, Ally Alexander Sheridan, Stacy Williams, Zoe Johnson, and Austin Saldana. It takes a big, strong team to do this new work, and I'm so grateful for these colleagues who've joined us in Washington County to help build and launch this program. Uh so hopefully you'll get to meet them soon in a, in a future presentation. But for today's uh sake of expediency, I will carry on and represent their work here for you today. Next slide, please. So you've heard lots about our Bridge Shelter programs. Um that is one of the foundational building blocks in our SHS program that we've begun. We uh now have three Bridge Shelter programs operating in Washington County, um at the Hillsborough, the, the um former Econo Lodge site and the Aloha Inn, which Shannon was just mentioned, mentioning will become our first all 100% PSH program, permanent supportive housing, um in the near future. And um uh Forest Grove Inn has been purchased by Central Cultural and now has been named the Casa de Amparo and is operating also as a, a, a Bridge Shelter program. And what Bridge Shelter means is it's a housing-focused shelter program. It connects people to case managers, those rent assistance tools, whatever it takes to help them achieve that permanent housing uh placement and the stability they need to hopefully never experience homelessness again. So there's a lot of support that goes into these programs so that it is the end of homelessness and the beginning of housing stability for everyone who moves through these programs. And to date, we have 102 of these um new shelter rooms in operation, which achieves our year-one expanded shelter capacity goal for the Supportive Housing Services program. Next slide, please. Another major foundational component of building out the system of care has been our Housing Case Management Program. I might take a minute to describe how this all works. So so far, there are 17 organizations who've entered into contract with the Supportive Housing Services program to implement a, a new housing case management program. Each of them are hiring between two and three case managers and getting them trained up and ready to go to be the boots on the ground to work with people from any point in homelessness to housing navigation, to uh securing that apartment and then ongoing housing retention, that all in wraparound support of a case manager. They each work with 20 to 30 households. Um and uh again, they do whatever it takes to achieve and sustain housing stability. And with this investment of the 17 organizations and the two to three case managers and the 20 to 30 participants per case manager, we have uh launched a capacity for 800 households to be served with permanent supportive housing through case management. And our goal is, as you may recall, 500 placements in year one. So this is a foundational program that will help us to achieve that goal. And kind of working right alongside of the Housing Case Management Program is another very important um first kind of building block of our SHS System of Care, which is the Regional Long-Term Rent Assistance Program. This is a local uh rent assistance subsidy mirrored and built on the best practices of the federal rent assistance system and um will be that tool that buys down the rent to make sure it's affordable for households with extremely low incomes, as often is the case for the people we're serving who experience prolonged homelessness. So every one of the households served in the Housing Case Management Program is paired with a rent assistance um subsidy to help make sure that housing is permanently affordable for them. Next slide, please. Now I'm gonna move into another layer of investments. Those were some of our programs in the first quarter. Here are some of our systemic and equity investments we're making to pair with those programmatic investments. So chapter two, if you will, of the um, of the quarterly report. And again, just at a very high level, as we committed in our local implementation, we are moving plan, in our local implementation plan, we are moving forward with uh investments in culturally specific organizations to build up their capacity to deliver more culturally specific services to our community. So for all of the uh culturally specific organizations that have so far signed on to contract with us, we've committed an additional $50,000 per year. we've committed an additional $50,000 per year for three years as capacity building, uh, to support their administrative or organizational needs so that they can both deliver this program and grow to deliver more services in our community. We've also built a training program for all of those new boots on the ground, uh, that are getting hired up by all the case manager, um, partners and the shelter partners. Um, all of this, these new housing staff members need to get, um, sturdy training under their feet to, to go out and do this work, including behavioral health, kind of 101 trainings culturally, um, and trauma-informed care, housing navigation 101. There's a long list of training programs and it will be available on an online portal. So whenever a new housing case manager gets hired, they can go and get themselves set up with the training, um, program that they need. And these programs, or the training program will be offered on a quarterly basis to keep our new, um, fleet of housing case managers and shelter providers fully trained, um, in the work that they're doing. We've also really, um, been thoughtful, uh, about how to procure these services. So we've conducted an RFPQ, which you may recall from earlier this spring, that's a request for programmatic qualifications, which qualified 38 organizations, many of whom are already contracting with us to provide some of these new programs and services. Um, and that process was heralded as a very inclusive and accessible process to many of the service providers, such that Washington, uh, that Clackamas and Multnomah Counties have asked us to convene the next process as a tri-county coordinated event. So we're very honored by, um, that, um, high praise and looking forward to continuing the use of this infra, this infrastructure, if you will, so that we can make country, uh, contracting with governments more accessible and, uh, widely available to these important service provider organizations in our community. Last but not least in this chapter is a mention of our Community Connect Modernization. That, if you may recall, is our Required Coordinated Entry System, required by HUD for all homeless services, um, continuum of cares. And it is the tool that sort of, um, tracks everyone's referral into the system and referral to other services. And as you know well, our system has had very little resources to meet the need in our community. And our Community Connect structure had, um, been designed to manage a system of scarcity. And anticipating this robust investment, we needed to redesign it to help people collect, connect efficiently and effectively to the housing programs and case managers who are going to help them. So we've trained scores, more assessors, and we've reduced the assessment from about an hour-plus-long phone call to a 20-minute conversation that quickly connects people to the next step in the work. And, um, this has also been heralded as great success by our service providers who are very happy to be using this tool now in our community when they're working with people in need. So those are some of the systems and equity investments so far underway in our first quarter. Next slide. Um, this slide, um, demonstrates the, um, outcomes reporting that we will need to do for the regional report every quarter and every, every year, and how we will generally, at a high level, track our investments and our impact, the efficacy of our Supportive Housing Services Program. So I will walk you by, um, through each of these metrics one by one. And I'll, uh, ask the, uh, Clerk Moss to help forward the slide each. The slide has, um, several steps in it. So program and inflow, uh, inflow and outflow. Here is an example of how that metric is measured. In the last quarter, 843 households were assessed through Community Connect, 278 were assisted, however, 393 exited without help and 172 continued to wait. This is a demonstration of our system of scarcity that we have here in Washington County before SHS Investments. Um, and in many way, the outcomes from this quarter represent that kind of baseline from which we are building upon with these new investments. So this is what we hope to be, um, correcting in future quarters, that the number of those assisted significantly increases and the numbers of those waiting or unhelped significantly decreases. Um, the next, uh, metric is system capacity. One way in which we measure that is through the number of supportive housing placements we have in our system. And right now, we have 394 supportive housing placements, but our data tells us that 885 households need this kind of supportive housing, um, service now in our community. And that's why our goal, it's part of the reason why our goal is 500 in the first year. We want to significantly scale up and meet that need. So again, we hope you see progress in this metric report in our future, um, future quarterly reporting. Next slide is the actual number, or sorry, next metric, the actual number of housing placements made in the last year. There are many kinds of housing placements, but I just wanted to highlight this one for you here in the presentation, which is the number of permanent supportive housing placements made over the last three months. That was only six households, in fact, and that has everything to do with the limited number of permanent supportive housing placements that we have the capacity for in our system. So again, a metric we hope to see significantly increase with more stories like Dora's over the next, um, three months and in future quarter reporting too. Um, next, length of homelessness helps us understand how long people are waiting for service in our community. And what we can see right now in the data is that, um, for every person who gets helped into housing, they generally experience homelessness for about a year, whereas people who are still waiting for housing have generally been homeless for closer to two years. So that demonstrates again the need for our focus on prolonged homelessness, people who are stuck in long-term homelessness and why we need to design our programs to serve especially these households. And then finally, a brighter note in our system baseline metrics is returns to homelessness. And this, um, metric, I believe demonstrates, uh, if you can forward it, please, Clerk Moss. Um, this, um, one demonstrates that when we house people, it works. Housing sticks, that in fact, 95% of our participants don't return to our system of homeless services. Only 5% return, and that is a very, very successful, um, retention rate that we will look to sustaining with increased capacity in the system. Okay, that's a lot of data, but hopefully that will start to kind of help formulate how we measure the impact of our work. Next slide, please. So each quarterly report must also include a financial report. And I am not going to go through all these detailed numbers with you, but, um, just at a high level, you see that our budget is based on the projected $38 million that Metro anticipated early on. We actually think that, that the newest, uh, projection is, uh, 52 million, but this reflects our current budget that we're working off of with, um, a program planning. So far, we've seen one, we've received 1 million of those dollars, those new tax dollars. That's pretty much exactly as expected because of the way a new tax, um, is collected uh, and a new tax of these sorts, the business tax and the income tax. So we expect the vast majority of the projected revenue to be received in the last quarter of, uh, this fiscal year. And that is why the inter-fund loan that you approved this spring has made all the difference so that we can build and launch this program according to the capacity that we will know, we know it needs to scale to be. Um, and so you can see the various program, programmatic investments, the different buckets of our services and how those have been budgeted and allocated so far and how much money is actually out the door so far. Um, and then at the, um, bottom table, just quickly referencing that, um, we are being very fiscally responsible with our reserving to anticipate economic downturns or any programmatic, um, emergencies and setting aside those reserves as needed for the long-term investment of this program. Next slide, please. And I just wanted to take a moment to give you a sense of scale because, um, this program, again, represents significant growth over the next, um, three to five years in our SH, in our homeless and housing services funding. The baseline pie chart represents sort of annually how much we've received from the federal government, the state funding, um, sources and our general fund and our safety levy in the gray, um, pie. And then you can see the second pie chart demonstrating the expansion of COVID. And you all are familiar with how much, how challenging it has been to get $8 million out the door of expanded federal resources because we've had a limited system for implementing this work. And that is why it's so important that we're building a very strong foundation to anticipate significantly more growth in coming years with the SHS Program. So this is just a quick sense of scale of what we're anticipating in growth with this new funding source. Next slide. Um, and I'm going to hurry on because I think I've, um, stayed longer than I meant to in this, um, presentation time. So, uh, just very quickly, this is some work already underway for our second quarter. We've got, um, funding opportunities, uh, posted now for permanent supportive housing programs in those affordable housing projects, um, that Shannon was presenting to you, the 1,472 units under development in Washington County. We hope many of those set aside units for supportive housing. So we've got some funding opportunities for those partners to consider as well as the operations, the permanent supportive housing program at Aloha Inn, which we're anticipating to, uh, open this spring. We're also working to expand the role of the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee to include, um, advisory bodywork of the, um, over, uh, long-term implementation of our supportive housing program. And then the next slide is just so important for us to mention, uh, next slide, please. The, uh, Winter Shelter Program. We are launching on Monday. Uh, we, we open winter shelter seasonally every win, uh, every winter from November 15th to March 15th. And this year, that body of work has come under the Supportive Housing Team. So they have been working very quickly to launch 187 shelter beds, focused on life-saving, um, shelter programs because of the emergence, that, because of winter weather conditions, but also using all of those new foundations of the Housing Case Management Program to help connect people to housing who are, when they're staying in these shelter programs. So you'll hear more about that in coming weeks, but just a note that that is an important system expansion happening, starting Monday. Next slide. And I'm just going to wrap up just mentioning that tri-county coordination is also well underway. There's a full, um, uh, list of these items of, of coordination, including that procurement that I mentioned and Arla, the Long-Term Rent Assistance Program, and more. We are working in full partnership with, um, Clackamas and Multnomah Counties. They've been excellent partners to us, uh, and Metro as well. And you'll hear more about the intergovernmental agreement in coming weeks. So just a note on tri-county coordination. And in closing of, uh, this quarterly presentation, the next slide, please, just takes us back to Dora and the reminder of the programmatic goals, what all of this system and programmatic investment is about. Our goal to get to 500 supportive housing placements this year with an additional 500 households served with other kinds of housing interventions and that, uh, sustaining those 100 new year-round shelter beds that we've invested. And that's year one, but we continue to grow in years two and three to support a much bigger system, um, uh, to, to meet the needs of people like Dora in our community and permanently end homelessness. So that concludes, um, my presentation for you all. I think our last slide is, uh, just some questions. Um, and I'll join my colleagues Josh and Shannon in, in fielding any questions you have for us about the Affordable Housing, uh, Bond Program, about the Supportive Housing Services Program. And also, we want to just make sure, um, you support us submitting officially this quarterly report for the SHS Program to Metro.
Well, thank you to the three of you. It was an excellent report. I know personally, I'll be using that information. It's handy to have it in one spot. And I appreciate the fact that it will be updated quarterly when I'm speaking with, with others. So I appreciate it. Are there other questions or comments? Chair Harrington.
Oh, I, I can go last. It's okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Uh, thank you, Chair, but, um, you know, you don't have to go last. We always leave that up to Pam now, so. So going back to, that, this is a phenomenal report and, um, I really appreciate it. It was good, good information. It's encouraging. Um, on the slide 22, you talk about the Winter Shelter Program. And I know that, um, we're going to have an opportunity to build some of those beds out the cloverleaf. But, um, where are these beds going? Uh, so where is, where is the shelters? Where is the Winter Shelter Program going to reside?
Excellent question because the cloverleaf is just an opportunity that we have this winter and don't expect to have in future winters. And in fact, the goal of the SHS Program is to be able to sort of graduate from winter-only shelter and find permanent locations to operate year-round shelter. So we invested, uh, within the, the beds anticipating there will be permanent shelter locations to move them from the cloverleaf to the future sites that are still to be identified. As you know, um, two of our city, um, partners are looking, um, at, uh, potential sites. So we, we're all working to identify permanent shelter programs. And we just wanted to make the best, uh, use of the limited space at the cloverleaf and, um, investing in, in bunk beds helped us to do that.
Are there other questions? Chair, please jump forward.
Thank you, I will. Uh, on affordable housing, uh, I happened along the Metro Council Work Session of Thursday, November 4th and saw in that, that for the Affordable Housing Program, uh, there is a proposal for a net cash developer fee. And I just wanted to check with our staff to make sure that you're fully, uh, engaged on this and to make sure that you know that if you have any concerns or problems with this, to please bump it up to us. Uh, whether it's our having a support letter to say, yes, this is, is good, or, oh, we have concerns, or no, this is bad. So, um, just, just wanted to touch on that with regard to affordable housing. On affordable housing, though, I just wanted to reinforce in case my cheering wasn't, uh, loud enough before, just incredible work in such a short period of time. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, what a bouquet. It's just incredible. On the Supportive Housing Services slide or side of it, um, uh, really, uh, a great quarterly report. You know, having been, having a little seat time on the airport or on the airplane gave me a little bit of time to catch up with some of my readings. So I made sure to, uh, uh, get to all the documents in our packet for today. Really fantastic information, a job well done. Since I, uh, am on vacation and not able, or shouldn't be on email too much, um, I just wanted to point out in that document on page two, in the introduction, in the, there's a blue paragraph as the first paragraph, then two more, uh, uh, black text paragraphs. And in the second sentence, which starts on the third line, "The experience of houselessness," or excuse me, homelessness "and housing stability also disproportionately impacts..." I think you meant housing instability. That's all. Um, and that's, that's the only, um, I mean, I have stars on all kinds of paragraphs, you know, just appreciating all the partners that you talk about. Um, you know, if, if you could see how many important messages I underlined for things that I was internalizing and the number of partners. I wish my encyclopedic skills of memory, uh, were, uh, tuned up better than they are at this stage of the game. Uh, but boy, this document has it all. So, um, really, I appreciate all that you've put into these various documents. Thank you, team, and into today's presentation. I couldn't be more proud of all of the efforts you've made to, uh, follow through in implementing these voter-approved programs and putting the assets that the community has entrusted us with into action to meet these very important community needs. Thank you. Your level of commitment, uh, to our communities and your public servants, service excellence is just exemplary. Thank you so much. Uh, this, doing things well takes incredible work. So thank you for following up on all of that. I'm just grateful beyond words.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
That's it for me, Vice Chair, Teresa.
I thank you, Chair. I have one other question is, and I think you've mentioned it, I'm sorry I missed it. Is there a link, a separate link just for this quarterly report? That I'd like to be able to send it to some people who are some, and these that are asking me for updates. So I'd like, or is it posted on our website? I, I know I can probably go to Metro like Catherine, but I'd like to be under R. And it looks like my internet connection is unstable. I apologize.
Commissioner Teresa, I can answer that question. So Philip Ransford, our communications manager, will be taking an excerpt of this, today's work session. We will send that link to you all. In addition, this information will be shared with our cities and special district managers as well.
Great, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Tanya, were you finished?
Oh, I just might add in that it is also up on the website for the SHS program. So we can also share a link with the staff and have that passed around for easy sharing. After the spelling correction, the error is correct. Thank you, Chair.
And Commissioner Phi, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I have a quick question. I echo what Chair Harrington was saying about the presentation and the report. Great job. I, I've heard a community group that I was having a conversation with last week that they said, Jesse, you're amazing. So I wanted to send that message to you that people are really appreciating what we're saying and how we're talking about the work we're doing to address this issue and your compassion. Josh, it's very hurt and I'm very impressed with our staff. I guess my question is really quick and that is, you know, the, the report and the presentation today. It's sort of, I'm reflecting back to a statement or a comment somebody made to me last week, which was, you know, the streets cannot be the waiting room for permanent housing. And our report and our presentation beside the winter shelter program that was mentioned sort of geared to permanent solutions. And I'm wondering what temporary solutions are you all entertaining or focusing on? Because I do agree, and I think all of us agree here, that the streets cannot be the waiting room for permanent solutions until these six hundred are up and going.
Well, I can take a first answer on that and Jess would be great to hear. So I, I think this first like several months have really just been intensive infrastructure building, right? Ensuring that we have the staffing internally, building out the capacity to have case management, getting some of these shelters up and running to start the programs and then building out the capacity of the supportive housing and rental assistance. So I, I would say at a big vision, we want to be able to meet folks where they're at. And there's just a lot of different opportunities and chances that we could take to do that. So permanent housing is always a goal. We want to get people into permanent housing solutions as that's evidence-based best practice. But we also understand there's other opportunities out there. People might not be quite ready for that. So I think our team is really looking at all the different, different programs, different options, and really trying to think through what can we do to meet the assortment of need in our community. But I would really say like the last several months, really just been infrastructure building to try getting some of the fundamentals in place. Jess, I don't know if there's.
I think you said that perfectly. In years past, our winter shelter was where everybody went to wait out the winter months before going back to the streets. And in this year, what we hope you see in our data shows is that people who go to our winter shelters help get moved into housing and then new people can come into the winter shelter. So we have this throughway to stable housing and that helps make our temporary shelter programs and any safety off the street programs that we are yet to launch be more effective because they lead to solutions. They don't perpetuate homelessness. So, so we need it. This is the first quarter, starting with the foundations as Josh explained, and more programmatic development to fill in the system of care coming soon.
Thank you. Chair Harrington, your hand is up. Thank you, Vice Chair Teresa. I have two things. And the first is I'd like to pick back up on the situation that Commissioner Phi is noting. I support everything that staff has provided in addressing that concern, you know, meeting folks where they're at, helping, you know, growing the capacity so that it leads to solutions versus perpetuating homelessness. But I do wonder, you know, we do have some folks in our community who are just fed up. And while if, if I provide a gross generalization of our current, the system we're ramping up and working on now as a compassionate response, given that we're meeting people where they're at and helping them get to stable permanency. I do wonder if we're setting ourselves up for a specific case. And what I, bear with me here. There have been articles over the last couple of years that our community members have had the opportunity to see for places like in Salt Lake City where the mayor put together programs such that for every person that they found living on the streets, they had a, an apartment for. So that essentially left the reader with the sense that homelessness evaporated in that community. And this relates to how with that Boise case, as a public agency, we can't force people into housing unless we have enough housing to meet the whole demand. So my question is this, with the avail, with the increasing availability of affordable housing and the level of financial support from the supportive housing services program, do you see a situation where we're going to be able to provide solutions for the entirety of the houselessness community that we're encountering in Washington County? And let me caveat with that, that I believe with the way the two measures were put together, that we, we never committed to solving all homelessness because we knew that would require additional investments and that this is really just a first significant step. But that's my memory. And so I'm looking to you because what I'm concerned about is that as we probe this need or this phrase of the streets cannot be the place for temporary housing, we're not in a position to be able to guarantee that situation won't occur for another five, 10 years. So, so let me stop there posing it that way and see what words of wisdom you have for us.
And maybe Josh and I will go in reverse order this time. So I'll, I'll try a, a first response for you. Thank you, Chair. I think you framed that very well. The measure investment, the level of investment in Washington County is scaled such that we have a lot of confidence and expectation that we will be able to meet the need in Washington County. But we also need to be aware that there are forces that impact the rates of homelessness and how homelessness presents in our community that are beyond the controls and the, the resources of the Department of Housing Services in Washington County. The, the major consideration for us in year one is that we are making at least five hundred rent assistance subsidies available to our community. That will have a significant impact if we're able to find five hundred apartments to rent. And that is, I think we need more time to understand what it's like when our community goes out there with these new rent assistance tools to help rent apartments and what kind of housing capacity our community has to work with this new resource. So can we check back also in a quarter and see how that rate is going of, of housing placement?
That's great. I just have one more point. Sorry for the background noise. And that is I have been following the briefing material on your progress with working towards the supportive housing services IGA. And I just want to offer that as my time away is a little complicated over the next couple of weeks, Ms. Angie knows how to reach me. And I do welcome her setting up, if, if the team wants or needs to have a, a special briefing time or, or time with me to go over that. I am totally open to that, but I will leave that up to Ms. Angie, okay?
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Again, I just think you did a great job and thank you for, so much for the report. And thank you for making it user-friendly so that we can share it with others and talk intelligently about what progress we're making. For me, it's very valuable. I'm certain it is for others as well. Are there any, any closing remarks? We are at the end of our work session today. Thank you. Thank you to Tanya. Thank you to staff for your flexibility in working with us to make this an efficient meeting day for us and giving some time to catch up with reading and all sorts of other things. So and Commissioner Willie, thank you for making sure that we were using our time effectively here. So if there's nothing more, I'm ready to close the meeting. Everybody else okay?
Job well done, Vice Chair Teresa. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know, we will not be together until after Thanksgiving. So happy holidays to you.